Cool. Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council's special meeting, Monday, May 9, 2022, to order. The public is welcome to attend City Council meetings in person at City Hall or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran. Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Lamb, if you don't mind. All right, thank you. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I think I have a first. I think there's also a second. Mayor Mauchow, were you second?
Second.
I think we both moved it, so it's fine for the purposes of the Clerk's office.
Great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, I think that's, I think Councilmember Moran just jumped on, so I think that's 6-0. All right, so next, council, I'm going to open it up for discussion on candidate questions before we move to that. I think so far, we've had two people drop out of the running, so I'd welcome any discussion or any points from you guys.
Deputy Mayor Clerk, can we get clarification? The email that I saw relative to Mr. Hefner said he wasn't able to join us, but can we get clarification from the Clerk's office if he's withdrawn his name or is just unable to attend?
Madam Mayor, it was not a withdrawal, it was just unable to attend the interviews tonight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have anything for candidate questions?
I don't recall exactly what we did in the last round. I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to ask questions that are a little bit more of variety outside of what we already asked on paper. We could simply just say that, you know, each candidate will get two questions or three questions and round robin through council members if we wanted to, just a suggestion, but...
Councilmember Howe?
Well, are we still asking our own individual questions of the candidates? I assume that, based on reading everybody's bios and profiles and so forth.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, I think maybe that's what Mayor Mauchow was saying. I don't want to speak for her.
Okay, is that what you were saying?
Well, I think the questions that were in the email are the very close to, if not the exact, questions that were already asked in their online applications. So we already got answers to those four questions on paper, so it doesn't make sense to re-ask those same questions. It would make more sense for us to ask individual questions, but we only gave each, like each candidate a 10-minute block. So if we all ask one question or two questions, we will go past that 10 minutes.
Councilmember Moran?
I wanted to say one I agree, and I agree with asking the different questions. The only problem that we've had in the past with doing that is then we get the, well, they asked it more difficult questions of so-and-so versus so-and-so and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure what we do to avoid that because I never tried to necessarily do that and, you know, still got accused of it. So I don't know, I don't know how to make that fair.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
There were, there were two questions on the list that was given to us that I'd like to, and I sent an email, I'd like to get those answered, and perhaps we just do one each of individual questions.
All right, I'm just looking for those so I can read them aloud. All right, so it was, "What specific work-life experience will you bring to the Planning Commission that sets you apart from other qualified applicants?" And question three, which was, "Approximately how often have you attended meetings for the Planning Commission?", is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then I agree with Councilmember Moran, you know, if we just ask like a total of three questions per applicant, would we just do, like Mayor Mauchow suggested, a round robin? So essentially, with whomever you get paired with, that's the question you get to ask of the applicant? Yeah, I think this is sensing confusion. Councilmember Howe?
Okay. Just to, just to make it easy for the people that are still playing catch-up here with the, because I haven't seen some of the emails, I think, that have come in this afternoon. What I do think is fair is to ask people to ask questions relevant to perhaps what their statements refer back to, because in that case, you're operating based on what you have in front of you from a stated point of view. And so I think that that, you know, as we, as we formulate our questions for individuals, I think they deserve to have that level of attention actually given to what they've stated, and it helps to potentially clarify, in particular if it's something that's a little obscure or could be taken a couple of different ways. So I, I'm not, I mean, I don't think anybody here is going to throw any softballs because this is actually too important a slot. I, I think we all care very deeply that the right folks get assigned into this, and we also want to make sure that folks never feel like they're under attack and never want to apply for anything ever again. So that's certainly not the goal either. So I, I think we're eager to find just the right match of personality and intellect that's going to just be stellar on this commission because it's so important. Personally, I'm excited to ask, you know, my, my questions, but are they going to be able to talk for like a minute to introduce themselves to, or are we going straight into questions?
My understanding was they had 10 minutes total to answer questions.
That's...
But up to us.
That's a big chunk of time.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of time.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, personally, I would love to give people up to a couple of minutes to just introduce themselves to us if we don't know them, and just, they could actually, and that could be, their introduction could be like part of the first question that we ask them even, just to kind of flesh that out a little bit further. Like the, "What makes you uniquely qualified?", that's a great question, to just get into your background a bit and to take some time and care with that answer.
Yeah, so if I may, if we do introductions for each and then do question, the second half of question one, question three, and question four, so that would be, "What specific work-life experience will you bring to the Planning Commission that sets you apart? Approximately how often have you attended meetings for the Planning Commission?", and the last one, "What topics would you like to see the Planning Commission work on so they can kind of speak to what their passions are?" Do we need anything formal for that? Okay, are we good to go? Councilmember Moran?
Can I ask, what is the, what is the last copy? So I have all the applicants, the most current applicants. So, what is the last, what's the email you sent with the last updated list of names?
Yeah, I can forward that to you. It is Michael Boyer, Melanie Kelsey, Roschino Farrell, Ernest Peralta, and Carrie Bosworth, in that order.
Okay, yeah, can you send that to me?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, I think that the process is always your process to create. We were trying to give you some, a starting point for you all to determine how you wanted to do your process and to try to give you a relative timeframe so that it's not, we don't wind up going four hours, but you get the information you need from the candidates. So if it works for you all to set your questions up in a certain way or do them in a certain order, then that is entirely up to the will of the council, and we are happy to accommodate as necessary.
Great, thank you. I think we seem to be in agreement, at least for the most part, of doing questions one, three, and four with an introduction as well, if that works for everyone?
Just a mini, that'd be great.
What was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. And then we'll do a round robin, so I'll just kind of like choose on each person to ask the next question, if that sounds okay? Great. Okay, so I think we're going to move forward. So Michael Boyer, welcome. Yeah, I believe it's up at the podium, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's so that when you step up to the podium, you can be seen on the screen as well.
Oh, got it. Am I good?
Yeah, yeah, you can go ahead with your introduction, and then we'll start with Councilmember Howe for questions.
Okay, superb. Well, thanks, everyone. My name is Michael Boyer. It is an honor to be here in person. This is just a wonderful evening for me. As far as uniquely qualified, I'm attracted to this commission because it's very similar to the work that I do as a consultant. I have many clients that do strategic planning. Currently, I'm doing work with Grant County in Washington State with a power company, Grant County PVD, developing their five-year strategic plan. So very similar work. I do this around the country, too. I've done this with hospital institutions, manufacturing groups, a lot of strategic work that I do. I'm an industrial engineer by training with graduate and postgraduate work in business, so I put all that to play, but also need to do a lot of data analysis and research. So I do a lot of that to support clients as I go forward. I'm a small business owner, so I'm very interested in our community and what happens there, and I guess I see myself as a very practical person, and I know you face many tough decisions. Boy, I, I, I'm not exactly sure how you resolve those, but I've had years of training. I've been in, in business for 40 years in problem solving, so I, I always believe that there's a way to solve a problem. I, I don't think there's a give up or you just punt. There is always answer there that if we work hard, we can get to that. Planning committee attendance, not physically, I am a fan of Channel 21, so especially during the last two years, I got the end of, I got to the end of Netflix, so I was looking at Channel 21 and watching what happens, and it's, it's fascinating. I just find it fascinating to see the things that you're faced with and then you have to decide. It seems like the last one I watched was, and on YouTube, too, the Planning Commission was going into a recommendation to y'all, so I understand that's what the role is, and very frequently, I do that in my work environment, too, putting forward a recommendation that causes you to choose something rather than making it harder on you. So I think, did I get the ones that you guys wanted to hear? I tried to understand the process, is that, sorry, I think I'll stop there.
Yeah, I know, it was very clear, I know. No, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think we have a couple more minutes. If there's anything else you'd like to introduce about yourself, and then we can move to the next.
I've been resident here for, coming up on 28 years. Kids went here, walked to school, we're staying here. Gosh, I lived in Clohanni and then Vintage and now by Pine Lake. I, I, I want to contribute because I think it's my obligation, my duty, to serve in the community, and I'm trying to find a way to do that. So I guess those would probably be my intentions, is I love it here, I want to just participate and make it better.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Howe?
So you pretty much answered the work-life experience component about what, what you bring to this and what sets you apart. So I'll ask you approximately how, okay, and so you've been attending just by, by Zoom, basically, or by Channel 21?
Yeah.
Commission meetings? Have you seen any of them?
The council meetings?
No, no, the Planning Commission meetings?
Yes, yes.
So, a few?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Wow, you know, going back to a latest recommendation on affordable housing, one of them that was on, I think, stormwater, some of these issues that admittedly is not my line of work, you know, I'm not that type of an engineer, but yeah, I've watched, you know, the last years, I guess, worth.
So what topics would you like to see the Planning Commission work on during your tenure if you're appointed?
I, I know there are a number of committees, and I, I think it's within the purview of that committee, but I could be wrong, so some latitude. As a resident, as I'm sure most of you have been faced with this, is balancing growth with the infrastructure, and I just think that that takes a lot of planning to look forward. There might be some unpleasant things in the near term because you've got the long game in mind, but that would probably be number one. Addressing limited resources, I mean, the community is a wonderful place, but, you know, you have scarce resources, so you have to make some decisions between what you can and what you cannot. Open spaces, parks, some of the, the commercial concerns versus what residential concerns might be, so a lot of trade-offs. And then the, the use of the land in, in that manner, you know, making those decisions. I think those are Planning Commission topics. I could be wrong, but those are, those are top of my mind.
Yeah.
For my question, then?
Oh, yes.
My personal question?
Yeah.
That's not that personal. So everyone should breathe easier now.
Sure.
But what I was interested in in your letters, you were talking about how you want to make things better.
Yeah.
And when you were just saying just now about, you know, there's some, going to be some tough trade-offs, and you believe that there's a solution to problems by working through it. Well, part, part of what I'm looking for is some, something more, a little more specific about just, okay, yeah, it can be tough, but how do you bring residents' points of view in, and what if that, the residents' point of view is different, say, than your own? How do you balance that? How do you bring forward discussion in such a way that, that true discussion can actually take place and so that decisions can, can happen?
Yeah, I guess in my problem-solving training, many times what happens is that we don't define the problem very well, and we spend a lot of time being scattered. I think, to me, it's essential to understand exactly what you're trying to understand, grasp what that is, and then data drives a lot of our actions. So as a researcher, I, I believe that if we take emotions out of this, we'll end up in a better place. Now, I know that politics might not agree with that, but I, I'm just one of, of data, statistics, gosh, as an engineer, that's kind of how I look at it. Without, if I use feelings to guide that, I think it, it might not come up with the right place to end. If there was a specific problem, Councilwoman, I guess I could comment on that, but I'm just saying in general, that's how I would approach things.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Michael. Thank you for going first.
Sure.
Sorry for that, yeah, yeah. And you're more than welcome to stay or go. I know you had asked initially, but hopefully we'll be appointing this evening after this.
Yeah, I will, I will stick around, so thanks so much.
Great, yeah, thank you so much. So Shanna Collins has actually withdrawn, and Jake Hefner is not able to make it, so that will move us next to Melanie Kelsey and Councilmember Lamb, if you'll ask the three questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, yes, sorry, Mayor Mauchow.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to allow us to ask individual questions of this.
Oh, okay, like everyone, so six more questions?
Did I misunderstand that?
No, you, that sounds great, yeah.
Okay.
Michael, will you come back? Yeah.
Sorry, I have a question for Mr. Boyer.
Okay. Mayor Mauchow will never leave again.
I'll be succinct, too.
Okay, so I think we'll go to Councilmember Lamb for your question.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a harder question. What is the GMA, which is the Growth Management Act, and what are some of its goals?
Honestly, I'm not, I don't, I know in general what that is as a citizen, but I don't know.
Could you explain to me in general what you think it is?
I, I believe my understanding, just looking at the, the summaries of all that, is trying to, as I said earlier, looking at the growth that we have and how do you manage all the elements in the community to have, still the, the, the community operate well, even though under, under the growth that we're going under, and what are the decisions you have to make and what are we constrained by? That's probably the extent of my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Councilmember Twain?
I have no questions for Michael Boyer.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Well, Mr. Boyer, for taking a guess at the Growth Management Act, that was pretty good.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's pretty darn close. It's, it's a, it's pretty much to look at everything to see how it manages everything. That's pretty much what it is.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what the goals are specifically, so, not, but after tonight it will, I can tell you.
There you go. Okay, so the question I have is, as you talk to friends, neighbors, and, you know, out in the community, what do you hear as being the number-one goal for SMAMSH? That you would carry forward?
Yeah.
It's as information to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, you know, I guess my source of information is, I'm the HOA president of our, our little HOA, and I hear a lot of that, of what they're, you know, just talking to the neighbors, which is great. And much of it has to do with, like, normal living things, traffic and using the parks and access in and out of SMAMSH, going up and down the hill, and the, the use of recreation. You know, the things that I watch in the planning community that we don't talk much about is stormwater, retention, maintenance, things like that. My neighbors don't talk about that. I think it's probably because it's managed, and I don't know how many people in their waking hours think about stormwater and what King County's doing to us, but I would say that those things, recreation, the retail spaces, you know, what's happening with QFC and Safeway, as well as then traffic, you know, what they see every day getting around SMAMSH.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Mayor Mauchow?
Great, thank you. Mr. Boyer first, thank you so much for coming this evening. I apologize if I'm not there in person. Mondays are challenging days, so. Anyway, I, I pulled my question from one of your answers to the, the questions that were generated through the application process, relative to the role of the Planning Commission. So I'm, I'm curious if you can help me understand what your vision is or describe what the comprehensive plan is and what your role would be as a planning commissioner in that plan.
Got it. I, and this is a supposition, as, like I said, I, I'm not crystal clear on all that the Planning Commission works on, it's just what I've seen them work on in, on Channel 21. But I, I think about it when I look at my work environment, when I do a planning for an institution. So for example, I've done a lot of planning with hospitals in the area. Right now, I'm working with Overlake, and I've done a lot with childrens. You can't look at one piece of that and hope that the whole works. So when I say comprehensive, it means that when we're, when I was working with childrens and I was working, helping them design their new buildings that they have, it was essential that we didn't just say, hey, here's how operations or peri-op or the ORs work. You have to have supplies come in, you have to have people come in, the emergency room is connected, parking's an issue, getting there, transportation. So I think about the city as a much larger experience than what I maybe have done in the corporate world, in that if we don't think about this comprehensively, and I think the Planning Commission, if they don't think about the whole, we might be missing some things, because I don't think small elements add up the whole. I think you have to look at this comprehensive to make smart decisions, and so recommendations, I would think, to, coming to this group, would be turning over all those stones and rocks and making sure that there's no blind spots, because we'd want to have a full answer, not some piece that might cause trouble because we didn't look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, last question.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, in your packet here, you did talk about kind of the effect of growth and how that affects the environment and long-term vision. I'm curious on what kind of growth you would see could be like our city's long-term vision, you know, whether that be no, little, lots, dense?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, being here for these years, you know, right where we are, there used to be a farm, and so now that's all houses, and everywhere, every place we look, it's, I don't know how much free land there is left, actually. I, I think it's, I would guess, quite small. However, I, I've always thought that we, we would bring the infrastructure up in, equal to the commercial and residential population commensurate. Again, back to my work-life, if I were to recommend to a client that they were to do something and bring up one piece of it and not the rest of it, so let's say, I did a lot of manufacturing work, so they're going to bring up this product, but not the supply chain, not the labor, not shipping, of all things, they can do a bunch of stuff, you can't ship any of it. So I, that's again where I think every piece of this element, that Planning Commission, as I've watched them, they think broadly, and they need to think about the whole system as they come up. And so for me, growth, it must be measured, it, it has to be in balance with the resources that we have. Otherwise, I think we'll end up with a condition that will be untenable.
Great, thank you. You are now done. Sorry for the long hot seat.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, so next, Melanie Kelsey, and then Councilmember Lamb, if you don't mind, asking the three, and then yours.
Yep. So am I doing an introduction before you ask questions?
Yes, please. Introduce yourself, yeah.
Just checking.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Melanie Kelsey. I know most of you, I ran for, for City Council previously. I have been a resident of SMAMSH for about 15 years, Pacific Northwest native, Seattle area native. I work at Microsoft. I live at the south end of the city, and no kids, two cats, which could be considered kids. That's, yeah, that's about an introduction for me. I mean, I have a lot of other answers to the questions, so. Thanks, Melanie. Can you talk about, like, what sets you apart from the other qualified applicants we have here today? Yeah, I think I'm uniquely qualified, and what sets me apart is I'm, I'm very organized, and I'm well-prepared, and I get things done. My professional background is, as some of you, as some of you know, is financial analysis, auditing, budgeting, planning, program and project management. I've worked in budget offices at both King County and the city of Bellevue, so I know how government works. I've worked in private sector. I've been at Microsoft for almost 16 years. I know how things operate in, in my role. I've had to ramp up very quickly on topics that I often either knew very little or nothing about in order to come in and audit the various organizations within Microsoft and, and get things done, gauge effectiveness, successfully review their processes, which I think this skill is, is great on any commission or in any organization where you have to jump in really quick and, and get up to speed on a topic that the commission has to make some sort of opinion on or give a, give ideas about. I've also needed to work collaboratively with people across different backgrounds, organizations, job levels, countries, to get things done and to get projects going. job levels, countries, to get things done and to get projects going. I have over 20, in addition, I have over 20 years of volunteer experience in many different organizations. Some examples, I've served on the Board of Perfect Pals, which is a no-kill cat shelter. I'm an animal husbandry volunteer at SR3. I'm a volunteer ride leader for Cascade Bicycle Club and a member of the Microsoft Employees Civic Engagement Team, and I served my sorority for almost 20 years. And I also feel that as a single female with no children, I bring a unique perspective to the Planning Commission that I also think we're doing a disservice to the community that currently our Planning Commission doesn't have any women on it.
Approximately, how often have you attended meetings for the Planning Commission?
I have not attended any in person. I've watched a handful, half a dozen, a dozen, I don't know, over the last few years. Usually, I watch them recorded, the recorded versions, not live, but that's about what I've done.
And what topics would you like to see the Planning Commission work on during your tenure if you are appointed?
Obviously, I, I mean, the comp, updates to the comp plan, that's on the agenda. I would like to, I'm especially interested in stormwater regulations, open space, and transportation. And then I'd also like to see the Planning Commission work on the topic that was at the council meeting last week about school overcrowding and the school concurrency. And while I agreed with what was discussed, that if the concurrency regulations aren't gonna be used, then they shouldn't be in the code, I also think that we need to do something or do more than what we currently do to more strongly ensure that development isn't gonna overburden our schools and our kids aren't gonna get bust off the plateau.
So my individual question is, on Planning Commission, you're gonna be looking at a lot of policy. How do you see the idea of equity fitting into your work on Planning Commission?
I would see the role of equity fitting in in terms of making sure that we've, first of all, done everything possible to get the opinions of all of the residents of the city, whether that's the traditional methods of surveys and, well, the traditional method of a survey, and going beyond that and trying to get opinions of, you know, community groups and getting involved with, you know, going and talking to different groups that might be less represented. I don't think any decision should be made without hearing all of those groups and taking their, what they say into, you know, into, factoring it into what we, what we agree in. So that, to me, that's how I think we should, you know, deal with the equity.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Treen?
So Ms. Kelsey, you're also on the Parks Board?
Yes, I am.
Currently?
Yes, I am.
So anything that you'd like to report to us, successes or challenges that you've seen or encountered there on the Parks Board?
Challenges? We haven't had any. I've been on the, so I've been on the Parks Commission for, what, four, since January, so four months. And currently, we've been involved in, and I've been active in, the discussions of the master plans for Beaton Hill and Big Rock South. And we have done the hopes and dreams discussions. We've had a couple of community groups come in and talk with us. And I also am the liaison between the Parks Commission and the YMCA, where I meet weekly monthly with the executive director of the YMCA as well as park staff. I haven't, no difficulties. I love being on the Parks Commission. I think it's excellent. I applied for this because, again, there aren't any women on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moran?
Ms. Kelsey, one, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for applying. The question I have is, priority-wise, and out of the, all the things that you see that need to be done, what would you prioritize as needs for the city? What would you say are the top two?
I would say the top two are infrastructure. Specifically, I would, I would go down into the road, the road structure and the transportation in the city to make sure that, that we have the transportation that can handle housing that we may take on as through the growth, our growth targets and the upcoming stuff. And then I also think that another priority is open space acquisition. I think we need to acquire open space and we need to keep the city the green and the outdoor nature that we have all come to love.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Malcho?
Yes, thank you. Melanie, thank you so much for coming and interviewing for this. I struggled because I really had two questions to ask you, and I'm not sure which one to ask, but I'm gonna go with, you stated on your application that the city should not look to provide additional housing units until we solve our infrastructure issues. Your answer went on, but as the city doesn't actually provide any housing, I'm hoping you can clarify what you meant in your statement for us.
Good question, thank you. I did, I did briefly go, okay, what did I write in my, in my questionnaire? But yes, that's the statement. I write that, that statement a lot of places. I would clarify it by saying the city shouldn't allow housing to be developed until we can get our infrastructure in place to handle the housing that we have now and then take on what we, this, the additional that we're gonna bring on. So that's, I would say the city should have regulations in place that, that require that the transport, that the roads and infrastructure is up to, up to, up to the level we currently need it at, so that it can then keep pace with anything we might add.
Okay. Can I clarify that as saying that you would be favorable to a moratorium? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to clarify.
I... I don't know.
Okay.
I will say, I will say that.
There. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Howe?
And weirdly, I was headed in a similar direction. So in that particular statement, you went on to say that we need to fix our comp plan and development regs to slow growth, that we've already had, and fix transportation. That would, that would, what's so hard is that I don't know of cities that are able to actually keep that perfect match and balance, infrastructure, then they've planned for their growth and have that perfect growth, and then their infrastructure, and then they have the growth. I don't know that that ever realistically actually happens. And the choice of words I found was interesting. You said fix the comp plan. It would appear you have some very specific points of view. And I'm, you know, and that's good, that, no issue there. You're gonna run into differences of opinion, and I'm gonna ask you, what happens, what happens then? How are you, how do you resolve that for yourself?
For myself, I mean, in general, when I'm faced with, with situations where it's a difference of opinion, it, I mean, to me, it's, it's discussion, it's, you resolve it through discussion. You resolve it through seeing if there is anywhere where there is common ground. I have been known to change my mind. I mean, if I'm given the right, the right facts, and fix may or may not have been the correct, the correct word to use in my, in my statement. I may have, knowing me, I may have been writing three or four different sentences and put them together. But, you know, that's kind of how I go about it, is if, if, if you give me, if you give me the support, if you give me the data, I may change my mind. You may convince me something different. But I do agree that, I mean, we shouldn't, our current residents shouldn't be subjected to the lowering of the quality of life based on our transportation deficiencies. And then we add more on top of that. So that, that's mainly what my point is, is we shouldn't, we shouldn't further deficient, further cause problems when we haven't, when we're already deficient.
Thank you very much, Melanie.
All right, and lastly, so I know initially you applied to the Parks and Rec and the Planning Commission, and I think planning was your primary. It was not? Okay.
At that point, planning was my second choice.
Oh, your plan was your second choice, okay. So, yeah, what has changed and what makes you kind of look at this instead?
Well, it's, it's, it's just like what I said. I mean, I put my name in because there are no women on the Planning Commission. That's, that is, that's, that's really the exact, I mean, I believe we do a huge disservice to this community by not having gender diversity on, on any of our commissions. I would say the same thing.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next, we have Rosheen O'Farrell on Zoom, I believe. Great. So I think, Rosheen, you'll be promoted, and then Councilmember Treen, if you don't mind asking the questions.
So Rosheen, you have a few minutes here just to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Okay, hi, Council. Lovely to see everybody. Sorry, I'm not in the chamber. It just didn't work out for me tonight, otherwise I would have been there, because I think it's very exciting that you're all moving back to the dais. It's lovely to see things back to where they should be. So again, my name is Rosheen O'Farrell. I've been a SMAMISH resident for, since 1999. My husband and I, my then boyfriend, and I moved to the United States way back, and we, we came here with green cards and we started working minimum wage jobs in the U District. We had a five-bedroom apartment with a whole bunch of strangers, and it was, at the time of our life, it was a crazy time. And over the last number of years, we've managed to find a way over to SMAMISH, buy a house here, and have loved every minute of it. We've raised our kids here. I have a son who's 21 now. My daughter is 16. They're both going through and have gone through the Esq. School District. As some of you may know, my son has autism, and that has taken me on a particular personal journey that I never expected to be on, and that led me to, in a sense, getting involved in matters of the city. I first approached the city back in 2016 about proclaiming World Autism Awareness Day, and thankfully, and thank you, everybody, you've continued to do so every year since. And that was certainly spearheaded by Kristi Malcho, and Kristi, I'm always very grateful to you for that. And from there, I really enjoyed kind of coming up to the dais and speaking at public comment, and I was very interested in getting more involved in my community. And I, I, the way I feel about SMAMISH is this is somewhere where I'm going to spend the rest of my life. I don't intend moving back home. I don't intend moving to another city. I want to live here and grow old here. And so I wanted to put down roots here, and I wanted to kind of, outside of my children, I need, wanted to find out what's going on, wanted, really interested in getting to know more people and the issues that were going on in my city. So I applied for the Planning Commission back in 2016 and served in Planning Commission from 2017 to 2019, and that was one of the greatest things I ever did. For, as a career, I spent most of my career life in retail management. I worked for Gap. I worked for Unlimited in Bellevue Square and in Redmond Town Center as a store manager there, worked with a lot of different people of different age groups, and learned an awful lot about running a business through that industry, and it's a great way to learn how the whole business world works. I have a degree in marketing from Trinity College Dublin, and, yeah, that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. What specific work or life experience will you bring to the Planning Commission that sets you apart from other qualified applicants?
Well, I'll bring all of me. I, I'm a mother first. I am a special needs advocate second, if not joint first. I am a US citizen. This is my adopted country, so I'm very passionate about it, and I don't take that aspect of my life for granted at all. And I am tremendously interested in all things related to the city. I tell my friends about some of the things I worked on the, on the Planning Commission, and I could just see their eyes kind of glaze over. They're already bored by the time I got to the second sentence. So they don't understand what concurrency is and have no interest in it, but for some reason, I seem to be, and I never knew I was. But I think what it is that I'm interested in is all the nuts and bolts of what it takes to run a community in a city and what it takes to build a city. And I think every one of you at the dais have the same interest that I do, otherwise you wouldn't be there. And it's fascinating to me that all the elements, right down to, you know, when we're doing some code updates, all matter because they all go into the bigger picture of how a city functions. And so that's what I would bring. I think part of my life experience, being a special needs mother, brings a certain level of, I have, I think I have a certain level of compassion for people that I never would have had before. I understand what it is, what acceptance is, and I also understand what it is to work really hard.
So approximately, how often have you attended meetings for the Planning Commission?
Well, obviously, when I was a commissioner, I attended all of them, bar probably two. And then I have kept a keen interest in it ever since. So it was back in, 2019 was probably my last meeting that I attended as a commissioner.
And then what would you like to see the Planning Commission work on during your tenure if you're appointed?
Well, I thought about that question, and it's an interesting one, because the commission has no say in what the work plan is. You work on what the work plan is. So city councils send the work plan down to Planning Commission, and Planning Commissioners go to, go to work. So we don't get to tell you what we'd like to work on. We'd probably like to, but we don't get to tell you what we'd like to work on. We get to work on what you ask us to work on, and then we send back our advice, and then you guys can decide whether you find it useful or not. But Planning Commissioners work very hard. I do a lot of reading around the packet when it would come in, and I would probably spend four, five hours per meeting preparing for the meeting and reading around and trying to get as much information, especially if it's a new subject that I don't know anything about, because I like to come to the meetings really prepared so that I have intelligent, kind of, well-read questions to ask staff, who are just the most amazing people, who always seem to have the answer right there, or if they don't, they go and find it for me and always get back to me. So I always would like to come to the meetings really prepared so that they don't have to repeat and go back over things they've already sent out, that I had come prepared and ready, and that I have questions that I can, that can be used to move the conversation along, not take us back.
Thank you.
Sure.
So our number one priority for the next two years is the comp plan update. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah. I think, you know, it's, it's coming through its normal cycle of every eight years, and I believe now King County have extended it to every 10 years. So you're going through your normal cycle of updating the comp plan, which it's, certainly probably needs it. And so, and I think it's a fantastic way of, instead of writing a document and it's set in stone, and then that's just how it is, that we go back constantly and review it and change it and analyze it, because city council members change, the makeup of our city changes, circumstances change. Who would have thought, when we wrote the last comp plan, that we would have had a pandemic? And that would have, you know, radically changed every single one of our lives. So I think it's, you know, very timely that the comp plan has been rewritten right now after us all having the experiences we've had, and I'm sure it's probably changed our minds on a lot of issues. So I think that's very exciting.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moran?
Well, I'm gonna go back to one of the questions that was asked. So let's say out of the last 12 months, how many meetings do you think that you were, you watched or you, you know, let's just say, watched?
Oh, Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been, I would say I've gone back and watched those that have happened this year, so from January on.
Okay. Okay.
All right, Mayor Malcho?
Great, thank you. Rosheen, first, thank you so much for coming and interviewing. You obviously have a good handle on what the Planning Commission is, having been on the Planning Commission.
Sure.
In your application, you state, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit here in the, in the onset, that we should balance issues to provide a, quote, "variety of housing choices available to our residents," so that residents have options to remain living in SMAMISH. so that residents have options to remain living in Simamish as the housing needs and lives evolve. I'm curious if you think Simamish should be everything to everyone and that we should mirror other cities, or if individuality and embracing what we are is okay?
Well, of course, in that answer, I'm talking about myself. I mean, of course, you do know that because I had stated earlier that, you know, it's of great interest to me to remain here through the remainder of whatever my lifespan shall be. So I'm not here to, like, as soon as my children have finished high school, I'm going to sell my house and move to Arizona. That's not what I'm about. So I'm interested in having, seeing, and as you've stated before, Kristi, and you're absolutely right, the city doesn't build housing. But I'm interested in seeing housing options for someone like me down the road who's still interested in remaining in Simamish but doesn't want the big house anymore, who would like to downsize, and who would like to live more in the center of things where I could walk to services and have a smaller home, whether it would be a townhome, whether it be a cottage, whether it would be an apartment, who knows, right? But I would like that there would be some options. And I've no idea what that's going to look like. And I don't get, as a Planning Commissioner, certainly wouldn't get to say what that's going to look like. But I would think, and I think all of us here who intend to remain Simamish, might like to have those options too. So I think, I don't think you can, I don't know if you can be all things to all people. Cities, large cities probably can, I suppose. But I think you can provide choice, and you can provide options, and everybody makes their decisions. But right now, we don't have a lot of choices. We have a big, big house, and that's kind of it at the moment, right? So I think we should do our best in planning for our city to provide more housing options to those who want to avail of it. And of course, the market will tell us, and the market, over time, will balance that out, right? As to what's been offered and what's been taken up and what is not. But I think we need to make it feasible for options to be made available to our current residents. And then to find out what it is our current residents really want as well. Because, like I say, it's not up to me to decide that. That would be up to the market, and that would be up to the city in general to maybe provide the structure around which something like that could happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Howe.
Good evening, Rosheen.
Hi, Karen.
Hi. Well, what I'm thinking about is that because you have had this prior experience on the commission, and because I'm not interested in keeping things the way they are or the way they always have been, I would like to know how we could improve the Planning Commission. What thoughts and ideas have you had that you think would make it a better, smarter, frankly, more effective commission that provides value to the council and to the city?
The only thing that comes to mind there is I think it would be great to see more council members attend the meetings. I, for example, I've been at several, well, a couple of meetings where Karen had attended. And it was wonderful to see her there. And I know the commission was always very excited when Councilmember Moran would attend. Because, to be honest, it made us feel a little bit special, you know? So I think it's wonderful when council members come to attend. I know you go to lots of other meetings. Maybe it's probably the last thing you want to do is go to another meeting. But I think once in a while, if council members would attend our meetings, I think that would be great. I would also think, the other thing that would make Planning Commission, and maybe all the commission meetings, more interesting and more valuable if we had way more public comment and more public attendance of those meetings. I think that would be, you know, at Planning Commission, public get to speak for seven minutes. I think it is, still seven minutes. And at, you know, City Council, you only get to speak for three. So when you come to Planning Commission, you certainly get a long time to express yourself, and I think that that's underutilized. So I would like to see more public comment, more public interest in what we do. I think it's a great way to communicate to the public. Because, like I say, we don't set the work plan for the Planning Commission. City councils do. So what we're working on, you guys are going to eventually work on or complete. And so it's a way of getting out there to the public, hey, these are the issues at hand. This is what the city council are interested in working on. Come see the beginning of how the sausage is made and give us your input. Because if you can tell Planning Commission, Planning Commission can put it together and send it up to City Council, and then we can add some more to it. But, so I think that's what I would, I would love to see. I don't know how I can make that happen. But that's what I would love to see, is more public interest, more public attendance, more public comment. And every once in a while, see the odd city council member attend our meetings just to make us feel special. Or them special, I shouldn't say me.
Thank you.
The odd council member. That's the best word.
Meaning, not odd, not as in strange, odd as in one or two.
All right, great. And Mayor Malcho, are you able to take over?
So Deputy Mayor, I can to some degree, but I'm a little disjointed as I just said.
Okay, I'll keep going.
So yeah.
Yeah, all right, all right. Councilmember Lamb.
Hi, Rosheen.
Hi, Amy.
So the city is considering, or it will be updating, its vision statement. And I'm going to read the current vision statement in part. It reads, "Simamish is a vibrant bedroom community blessed with well-preserved natural environment, et cetera." What do you think of the words "vibrant bedroom community"? Would you change it? Would you keep it?
I like the word vibrant. I mean, I like to think of myself as vibrant too. So I like the word vibrant, and it has very positive connotations to it. Bedroom community, I've always kind of wondered. Bedroom community, I understand what we mean by that. This is a place where people come to rest. It's not necessarily an industrial hub. We don't have large commercial areas. I think that's probably what we mean by bedroom community. It also can, and maybe it also has, like, maybe it's an industry term, you know, that's a specific term you have to have in the comp plan. I'm not sure. So given that that's not a specific term that must be there, bedroom community does also have connotations of sleepiness. And that we're kind of sleepy, and, you know, it's not a very happening place, right? And I understand that that may be exactly what a lot of people like about Simamish. So I think vibrant is a very good word. Bedroom community could go either way about, in my mind. I don't dislike it, but it can, I think maybe we might want to put in maybe some other language around that if, maybe stipulating what we mean by bedroom community. Because I think, you know, when you think of the life of the city, right? I'm originally from Dublin. Well, not from Dublin, but I lived in Dublin for a very long time, for over 10 years. My husband's from Dublin. Dublin is over 1,000 years old. And I'm fairly sure it looks nothing like it did when it was first founded by the Vikings, right? So a city is in constant flux and constant change, and it will change long after all of us are dead. So it's up to us to kind of start the, and we're at a very, very early stages of what the city eventually may end up looking like. But I think it's important for us, as we move forward as the city, to make sure that we understand what we want our city to look like in the short to medium term, because long term is well beyond our lifespan, right? And at the same time, making sure that this is not a city that gets left behind. And we can decide what that means, right? It certainly doesn't have, we're not trying to be Seattle, I'm sure. We don't want major high-rises, I'm sure, those kinds of things. But at the same time, we can still be very vibrant and where everybody is really excited about living here. And so we have to kind of keep working on what, when we use that word vibrant, that we understand what we mean by that, and that we don't, it's not just a word that we're putting in there, and we work hard at keeping it vibrant. So that people want to continue to move here, that people's home values continue to rise. Because if we're no longer vibrant and attractive, that mightn't always be the case. So I think that word vibrant is an important word, and we have to live up to it.
Thank you.
All right, Rosheen, last question. It's kind of a two-part, yeah. So why come back now? And would you want that 2024 term or the 2025?
In terms of the term, I would leave that up to you guys. That's, you know, I'll serve as needed. And why come back now? Well, quite honestly, because I was asked. I got an email from the City Clerk's Office. I wasn't expecting it. And I took a while, it took some time to think about it because I didn't think about applying for the Planning Commission. I didn't even know there was vacancies at the commission. I thought that was all sorted out. So it never even occurred to me. And so I had applied, as you know, for the vacancy at City Council and was not successful, and that's fine. And then I thought, okay, well, you know, why not apply for Planning Commission? It was a magnificent personal experience for me, and I enjoyed everybody that I worked with there. And I think we did some really good work with the Urban Forest Management Plan and with the Simamish Homegrown, et cetera. And it was extremely interesting, and I'd just like to continue doing that and helping out where I can.
Great, thank you so much, Rosheen.
Sure, you're welcome.
All right, next, Ernest Peralta. Is he online?
I saw him on there earlier, but he's no longer on the list of attendees.
All right. If it's okay, then maybe we can move to Carrie Bosworth?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Councilmember Moran, are you okay to ask the questions? Cool.
Okay, so I get to start with an introduction? All right. I'm going to choose number two. And hi, my name is Carrie, and I've lived in Simamish for four years. And in that time, I've fallen in love with Simamish, like so many of you. And I want to say that each and every one of you, on the dais, staff, members of the community, and even the really strongly opinionated people on Facebook, have changed my life. Never, ever before in any city where I've lived have I been so engaged and involved. I've spent the last few years learning about failed intersections and concurrency and stormwater management. And I have to say, it has completely captured my curiosity beyond what I ever anticipated. Last fall, I volunteered with friends of Lake Simamish down at the park. I helped them clear blackberries. And I was the total nerd that raced up front to the leaders. And I was like asking them questions to no end about Issaquah and the park. And then I totally stalked them at lunch. I went and sat at their table. And I just continued to ask them questions about Simamish and how it relates to the lake. A year, my family, they're, I talk about this all the time with them now, and they're actually really interested. They like hearing about failed intersections and roundabouts that are going to be coming out and things like that. A year ago, I applied to the Human Services Commission because I wanted to become involved. But I really didn't have a whole lot of experience. And I remember looking at the Planning Commission application and being like, oh, my God, that's a lot of work. But a lot has happened in a year, and I feel up for the challenge. And I didn't apply at the beginning of the year because I do work on my HOA, and I'm helping them through some real serious problems, challenges. And I didn't feel like I could just drop it and leave them. But here we are. You have two seats available, and it would be my pleasure to assist.
You're on mute, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so our three questions. One, what is, what specific work or life experience would you bring to the Planning Commission?
Sure. So I think to be qualified, I'll start with that because that was part of one of the questions, is you kind of need to get out there and see the city and know what you're dealing with, know the features, know the challenges. And as I've been living here, I go to meetings and I go to town halls, and then I take these field trips. When I join your meetings and I hear about stuff, I go and check them out. So for example, last year, on a call, a gentleman called in, and he was talking about this gravel road that he lives on and how dangerous it was. And I was like, where is that? Because my roads are paved. And I went and checked it out somewhere over near Ebroite, and that's a part of Simamish I haven't been to before. I also think we need to actively live here. So I take the bus three days a week to work. I did it before the pandemic, and I do it now. And I do that because I want to help the environment. I want to reduce traffic that people care about. But I also want, it also allows me to give a perspective on our transit options in the city. And then I also, I don't have children. I have two dogs. But I don't really interact with our schools much. But I got an opportunity to go volunteer at Creekside. And it kind of helped me understand this pickup congestion situation that everyone talks about. And I have to tell you, a few times, I could not get into the school. I had to park two blocks away, and I had to carry my box and take it into the school. So I'll bring this back to a specific skill that I have from my work, just one I'll pick out. And that's emergency preparedness. Early on in my career, I spent four years working with banks, and I did over a dozen disaster recovery tests with them. I planned, I participated. There was even a disaster on the East Coast. I don't know if you remember, but for about 18 hours, I think like five states lost power, and we declared emergency. We went there and did it. And I'll tie this back to the beginning. If you recall, in Christmas, there was snow right after the holiday. And I had no intention of leaving my house at all. But I got a call from my sister, and she said, I'm stranded in Duval. And based on all these field trips and everything that you guys have talked about, I thought about, how am I going to get out of the city without going down a giant hill? And based on my exploration, I decided to go out to 44th Street Northeast. And I made a good guess. It was, there was a little hill there at the end, but I was able to get out to 202 safely. And so that's exploring, taking part, and putting that experience to use is what makes me uniquely qualified.
Good. Okay, so next question I have is, how often have you attended or watched the meetings over the last year? Just a guess.
Okay. I'll start by saying none until last week, but I attend your meetings every week. And when I come to your meetings, I don't always stay till the end because they go past my bedtime sometimes.
Mine too.
But I attend yours, and I hear about the Planning Commission work through them. And then they even come to these meetings, like last fall, I believe they came and presented the development regulations. And then at these meetings, I hear from Mary Victor and Paul Stickney, who I know attend the Planning Commissions every week. They're always telling me to go. I have other meetings I have to attend to in the week. But, so I attend yours, not theirs. But I will say, I watched April 21st, and it gave me a really good feel for how the commissioners there work and how the flow of the meeting, like, it was kind of neat because they had staff there and, you know, they had their full attention. So it was very different than the meetings here. And I will say there, it was kind of special to see Jerry, Mark, Josh, and TC, and I think Mike was not there that night. It was just great to see all the variety in their responses to their discussions about stormwater. And Jerry and TC very much didn't want it to be a misdemeanor to wash your car in the driveway. And so I think that it made me think about my work on the HOA, where we have a Realtor, a minister, and a tech professional. And those professions kind of bring obvious things to the table. But it's kind of like, as you dig deeper, you start to see their temperaments and other skills. And so I saw that on the meeting that I watched. And I think the diversity, especially what Melanie was talking about, is a superpower when it comes to commissions and boards.
And the last question is, what topics would you like to see worked on for the Planning Commission?
Sure. So like Rosheen said, I know that they work on what you want them to work on. And a big thing coming up, I think it's through the end of 2024, is the comp plan. And so that's very important. That's what they'll be working on. And there are other things that intersect with that that I've been following, and that would be the Bluma EIS, the vision statement rework, and growth targets. And then, even though I don't get to say what we do, things I would be looking for... or keeping an eye on for focus is to, you know, very passionate about making Sammamish work for seniors. That becomes, kind of to Roisin's point, the cycle of life, it becomes more relevant when you actually start to experience it. And my dad has helped me with that. I would love for him to be in Sammamish. And then obviously getting input for housing. And I'm passionate about a connected city. That's something that the community wants. And I want to say, I lived in a connected city. There's this place called Bramley, Ontario, and it was a planned city. It has bike paths, and they connect it to rec centers and parks and a big park in the center. And I was 12, I think, when I lived there, and I rode my bike everywhere. And I just want to say, it's possible. So I really would be keeping an eye on how we can be more connected. And then I know we want to focus on infrastructure. I kind of, I do, that's important, we need it. And the way I would describe that is to keep a focus on issues that broke things in the past, hold what's in progress accountable while also looking on the, in the future. Because one of the hardest things to do in the city is sometimes to have conversations with our residents because there are a lot of hot button issues. And you could just be having a casual conversation, and you might say housing, and it just blows up. And I don't want it to be that way.
Okay. Okay, well, that covers the three questions. So I'm going to ask mine. So looking out, what do you vision Sammamish to look like in 20 years?
20 years? Well, Sammamish is, one of the hardest things, and I'm still exploring, is trying to grapple with, Sammamish is actually big. It feels really small. Like, you all have done a very good job of making Sammamish feel very intimate and cozy, but we actually are kind of big. So one of the things I still have yet to do is continue to go out and see how much land is left. Some people say it's a lot, some people say it's not a lot, and I haven't quite figured out which one it is. And it also blows me away by how many, how many, how much parks we have now. So I think in 20 years, I think we need to obviously stop talking about fixing infrastructure. We do need to do infrastructure. I would like to see a more connected city. And what's interesting about that is I think you have to get buy-in from the people. I don't want to just build trails and bike lanes if the city themselves are not going to use it. So I do think we need to be like, realistically, are you going to bike to the center of the city or not? And if you're not, then let's not plan for that. But I do think people want a more connected city. And public transit, I take it. I would like to see a little bit more and a little bit more reliable. It was a really bumpy start in February, almost gave up, but I kept with it. So I think it's all about balance. I think that we have some room to grow. We do need to fix some problems. Would love to enhance, use the parks more and make that more of a real feature that everyone uses, and maybe even some revenue sources there, if that's going to be our thing. And so, so really thoughtful, thoughtful growth and just improve what we have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Malchow.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Thanks so much for taking time out of your evening to come and interview with us. My question is, you described the role of the planning commission to be almost exclusive to the comprehensive plan. What else do you consider to be the role of planning commissioner?
What else is the role? I don't quite know yet, but I do know that that is a big part of it. I definitely think they could have the, if they don't already, I think it'd be a great opportunity to get more input from the public, like help you guys with that. I will say, I recently, I volunteered on my HOA to make a big decision, and it's one area where I learned a lot because I made some assumptions about things, not bad assumptions or major assumptions, just nuances that after we made that decision, I realized it got missed, you know, it wasn't entirely correct. And so what I did after the fact, you know, there was a little bit of frustration. I actually reached out to people and said, let's go on a walk and figure this out. And the coolest thing about talking to them after the fact was realizing how they just misinterpreted what we were doing, or, and so how easy it is for that to happen. So we talk a lot about getting input from the community, and it's really hard to make sure that they know what you're doing and for you to take their feedback the right way. So I think that if they don't already, I would love for the planning commission to help bridge that conversation with the community.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Howe.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
What I would like to ask you a bit about is around the transit, because you are a transit user and a champion for it. I know Roisin is as well. But you also mentioned that, you know, if nobody uses it, then why have it? So, you know, it is a little bit of, you know, do you believe it all, and if you build it, they will come? Or how do you make that bridge to where you can look ahead into the future and see that we're going to have to have different types of modalities for humans to get around here? So how do you plan for that when you know right now behavior does not model that future?
Yeah. I thought about that for myself because I'm not really a biker. Like, my, the extent of my exercising is walking. So for me to be like, oh, bike from my house up these hills to the center of Sammamish is a challenge even for me. And I have to imagine that would be a challenge for a lot of people. The way I see the future, it's kind of interesting. For the first time in my life, I'm like, you know what? I'll probably have multiple kinds of bikes. So I'll probably have a bike that I tool around the neighborhood with, and then I'll probably in the near future have an electric bike. And that, I feel more comfortable going up the hills and stuff. And then we would have to address the safety aspect. Do I feel safe getting to various parts of the city? So I think I'm a big proponent of, let's brainstorm it out, let's actually talk about it and hear what your issues are to see if we can get past those. So I think that, you know, I do that myself. I have to really think about how to use it. And then I've started to think about what my future is going to look like. And also making it easier for people to get down to the bus. I walk a mile to get to the bus, and it's a huge commitment. I don't know how many other people would do that. So definitely have to think about what's realistic, but I think we do want some of that to happen, so let's figure it out.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Hello. Hi, Carrie. It's great to see a resident as engaged as you. You know, you come and make public comment. I see your comments on social media, and I think it's fantastic. I'm going to ask a question that I ask Michael Boyer. So what is the GMA and what are a few of its goals?
Sure. I remember when I first moved here, I heard it a lot, and I didn't know what it was. And I, the thing that actually gave me some insight was a Sammamish indie podcast talked about, had someone on, I think it was someone from the Issaquah, half a school district, and they were talking about it. And just hearing it verbally was really interesting to me. And I believe the, if you back up, kind of the point of it is to not have, you know, sprawl out everywhere and to sort of keep people closer together so that services and infrastructure can be more optimally planned where the people are and to keep them safe. I often think about California and how, I'm no expert by any means, but, you know, I was doing some reading and how, you know, people were extending farther and farther into the fire zone. And, you know, it sounds good because you need housing and there's places to go live out in the wilderness, but, but then they get in trouble when fires happen, and so you have to go save them. So the GMA, I think the original tenet was to kind of keep things closer together, to kind of keep services and schools and everything closer together. And then, so all the cities kind of have to work with that, and we're all different. Sammamish has unique characteristics versus Redmond and Bellevue and Issaquah and Seattle. So I think that the, it allows for the cities to kind of come together and figure out what they can do and what's appropriate for them. And sometimes, I think there's a balance. I think cities can come and say, like, this is what we're thinking. And then maybe the GMA kind of pushes back and says, we need a little bit more. And so I think it's a balance and always kind of like a little give and take in terms of the growth numbers.
Thanks, Carrie, and thanks for coming in.
Councilmember Trine?
So the biggest challenge with the Growth Management Act is that it has competing elements in it. So you've talked about balancing out that competing elements. And so how do you feel about the competing elements of housing versus the environment?
Yeah, it's definitely, I feel like everything is competing all the time. And I think it has to be thoughtful. When I watch meetings and stuff, you know, like going through the development regulations and stuff like that, it's like, we spend a lot of time thinking about what lots are going to look like, but it's kind of like how many are left? And are we planning for a hypothetical or are we planning for what's actually here? And so the way that I would, I would want to balance that is I would just really want to dig in and be like, what do we have here? Like, let's, I don't know if this is allowed or legal, but I would look at the city itself and say, where is the land? And just deal with what we have specifically. And then from there, look at those lots, whether that be more, you know, town center or wherever else. I mean, the growth, the conversation the other night, it said something like, I think you guys settled on 500 or 700 units in town center property where I see open space, but then there were like 1,300 or 1,700 elsewhere in the city. And I'm really curious where all that is. And so I think the way to solve it is to really look at what we actually have and plan that, even though it's private property and stuff like that. But plan what we have and figure out where we want it, and then use incentives to help drive where we want to see that. And then obviously, when you're going to put stuff on that land, try and do it as environmentally as possible. And some people think that closer together is more environmentally friendly, and others think separate buildings are, so it's just a difference of opinion.
Thank you.
All right. Lastly, what is your view on growth? I know Mayor Malchow, I think, asked, or maybe it was Karen Moran, like, you know, 2040, what do you see? You know, so what about growth? I think I asked Michael the, kind of the same question, similar in like your views and kind of what you think.
Yeah. I have to say, I think it's incredible that as residents and citizens, we actually are like dealing with this question on a daily basis because I've lived all over the country and out of the country. And I was just living in cities. Like, we didn't have these conversations. Nobody talked about, the cities were pretty much grown, done. I mean, there was always room for new places. And so I'm still really getting used to talking about growth and what I think is appropriate. Like, I'm still learning. And I know that, the one thing I do know, though, is that we can't just stop and stand still.
Great, thank you so much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then Ernest, did we ever find him?
He emailed that he was having technical issues, and I do not see him on the attendee list.
Okay. I don't know what to do about that. So he could still be considered kind of like Jake, minus an interview perhaps, if we can't get ahold of him?
Yes. Now, I'll let you know if he shows up. But I don't, I don't know if you want to set a time limit or anything, but I'll let you know if he does appear on the list.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah. Councilmember Howe, an idea of a phone call. I don't know if like a five or 10 minute break would be a good moment to see if we can get him back on.
Okay. I will call him.
Sorry. All right. Are you guys good with a five minute break? Good, cool. All right, five minutes.
So Council, I've got 8:05. In the event that you've got your camera off, maybe you can pop it on so we know you're back. Perfect. Looks like, is Councilmember Lamb there? Okay. Perfect. So, Council, we do have the opportunity to call an executive session, and I think I would appreciate the opportunity to call an executive session to just discuss the applicants. Our city manager has his hand up.
Hi, Mayor. We chatted with the city attorney this afternoon, and she reminded that actually we cannot call executive session for appointed positions, only for elected officials, only for elected positions.
Okay. All right, very good. So then, no executive session. I don't know that we have necessarily a process relative to how we want to do this. I don't know if the city clerk's office has a spreadsheet, but I don't know if council necessarily wants to use a spreadsheet. So I'm not going to make any assumptions there, and will certainly look to council to hear how you want to proceed with this. Deputy Mayor Clark?
I'd be good with doing a motion. I did speak to the city clerk. She did not have a spreadsheet prepared, as, so I would be good with a motion.
Perfect. So I would entertain a motion. Oh, before I do, though, I might also suggest as either a part of your motion, or we could do it by how the votes fall, because there are two applicants and their terms are different terms. One is, ends in 2024, the other in 2025. So in the past, when we've done spreadsheet votes, the one with the most votes ends up with the longest term. So that, just make sure as you're framing motions that you are considering term lengths unless council wants to make a motion relative to term lengths in terms of vote count. So Deputy Mayor Clark, do you still have your hand up, or you have a motion? Go ahead.
I have a motion. So for Planning Commission, position number one, term ending January 31st, 2024, I would like to appoint Carrie Bosworth.
May I second?
Okay, motion's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I will make a quick comment, and I think Ms. Bosworth appears to be very well engaged. She is well spoken. I was concerned that she didn't understand the role of the planning commission outside of the comprehensive plan. And there is a much larger role for the planning commission outside of just the comp plan. And actually, the council will have it in 2024. So the planning commission will have it, and then they toss it to us. So that was my only concern was Ms. Bosworth, with Ms. Bosworth, excuse me, tongue tied there, relative to the planning commission appointment. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to, we have a motion for Ms. Bosworth for position one, which terminates in 2024. Deputy Mayor Clark?
So I'd like to move position number five, term ending January 31st, 2025, to appoint Roisin O'Farrell.
May I second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
I guess I'll speak to this one. Yeah, Roisin has served before. I think she would be perfect to kind of step into this role and catch back up very quickly.
Any further discussion? I'll just say very briefly, I think Roisin has served the city very well previously. I do think there are, however, other applicants, and because we're not doing the spreadsheet thing, I'm going to have to pass on Ms. O'Farrell so that I can vote for another applicant that I wish to appoint. All right, if there isn't any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, by a vote of three, three, motion fails. I would entertain another motion.
I move to, a motion to approve Melanie Kelsey to the Planning Commission.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Trin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, Melanie is currently already serving the city in the capacity of the Parks Department. She'd be an excellent addition to our Planning Commission.
Any further discussion? I will speak to this applicant as well. I think Melanie actually balances Carrie Bosworth out incredibly well. However, my only concern with Ms. Kelsey is that we just appointed her to the Parks Commission and it pains me that we are going to do ourselves a disservice of additional work by removing a commissioner from one commission and moving them to the next. We will now have to reappoint an open position on the Parks Board. That is my only heartburn there. So, Councilmember Moran?
Well, I think that Melanie, with the amount of knowledge and stuff that she has, I think she would be excellent on the Planning Commission. I wanted her on the Planning Commission to start with. The fact that she's on the Parks Board, I think that's an easy fix. And that's actually where I would rather Carrie Bosworth would have gone. Because honestly, I think she would be great as, that would be a good starting point. I started on the Parks Board and I think that's a, that's really a good place to start. So that's where I would have started her. But since we did this, I still think Kelsey, with the amount of background and knowledge she has, I think that's an easy place to start, somebody new is on the Parks. And I think this is an easy transition for her.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Well, the only, well, I agree with you, Mayor Malcha, about the switching role thing. Because we, I'm concerned about that spot as well. But also Melanie informed us that this wasn't her burning desire. It was to be on the Parks Commission. That was the thing she wanted to be on. And she is doing this maybe as a favor, but, or just to do some kind of balance thing. But what she wanted originally was the Parks Commission. And that's why I believe that keeping her there in the place that she actually prefers is maybe the best thing.
So because there aren't any more hands up, I'll just say one more additional comment. And I want to go back to the Balancing Act, which is, I think that Ms. Kelsey balances the different perspectives of Ms. Bosworth. And I think that our council and commissions are both very well-served by a diversity of opinions, which is why I think Ms. Kelsey would be and do a good service for our city and the Planning Commission in that role. Because I think the more that we have differing opinions, they get to a better place ultimately and roll policy up to council. So I will be supporting Ms. Kelsey for this position. All right. If there is not any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of three, three, motion fails. I'd entertain another motion.
Make a motion to appoint Michael Boyer to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that. Councilmember Trin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just met Michael when he applied the first time here. And so after having several conversations with him and his expertise that he brings as a business and professional life, there is ability for him to catch up quickly and be a good asset, actually probably one of the better assets because of his diversity of knowledge compared to the other current council members or the Planning Commissions. He would fit in well with that group and actually add to the base of knowledge there. And my only concern, I mean, he's just, he's got a little catching up to do, but I can just tell you that he'll do the work and do the research necessary. It won't take him but a couple of weeks to a month to figure out what they're headed and where they're going, so.
I don't have any additional hands up, so I'll just simply add, yes, I would agree. He was not as up to speed on maybe, you know, what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. But I do believe that people that want to be involved can catch up on those items. And again, I think the diversity of opinion would serve this council well. If we put a bunch of people on the Planning Commission that all think the same, we don't get a very good product that comes to council. So I'm very cognizant of trying to balance that, which is where I'm putting my votes here. So would encourage my fellow councilmembers to consider some diversity of opinions going onto the Planning Commission. Councilmember Howe?
My question is around the diversity of opinion. Can you help me understand where you think the current council or the current commission stands in terms of their diversity of opinion? Do you feel like this is a new voice that's being added, a similar voice?
So I'm looking at just these two appointments right now.
Not the whole commission as a whole.
No, but I think we're getting a diversity of opinions here. And the questions that we ask from previous appointments are going to just be that. There'll be different opinions. But I think my vote for Ms. Bosworth is, clearly, we are going to get one perspective from Ms. Bosworth, given her life experiences and what she does currently. And I would like to bring on someone else that maybe comes from a different perspective. Because again, I think that gets to the root issue of what is the best policy to boil up to council for us to consider. Okay, I don't see any more hands up. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of two, four, motion fails. Counsel, are there any other motions? I am seeing none. So we still have an open position then on our Planning Commission. And Mr. City Manager, I'll kind of put this over in your corner. I know we can bring this back when we are not potentially going to be, you know, high centered on a three, three split, but.
Thank you, Mayor. I think obviously we are willing to bring it back whenever it works for the will of the council. We will look to you to let us know when it seems to be a good approach. I think one of the things that we would need to circle back on is, are we reopening the candidate pool? Are we using the existing pool? And how you want to do that? So we're happy to accommodate as necessary. We could also just postpone the rest of this essential conversation until a meeting after the seventh council member is appointed and bring it back. If that works for you all, we're happy to set that up as well. So we're just looking for some timeframe direction from you all about how you want to do that.
Sure. I'd be most interested, I think, from the perspective of staff. Because my understanding originally was that staff was kind of pressing for us to get this done as quickly as possible. And we kind of reopened the application process there by delaying the appointments right out of the gate. So if you could maybe speak to the staff perspective on the work that the Planning Commission is doing and how kind of kicking this can down the road impacts that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I would say obviously, you know, from the staff perspective, we'd like to get Planning Commissioners seated as soon as possible because there is a lot to learn, as you all have been alluding to in some of your questions. I think the, one of the bigger processes that takes place is the interview process. So if we're just talking about a potential appointment, we could add that, for instance, on to the May 17th meeting agenda as an example, or even the first meeting in June. I think a couple of weeks here and there is probably not the end of the world from a staff perspective. It just, again, depends on if and when you all feel like you're ready to bring that back.
Councilmember Moran?
We do still have a couple of applicants that we have not interviewed. So maybe we can interview them at the next meeting. Especially the gentleman that was having communication issues tonight. Because I totally understand that. And maybe we can talk with him and bring it back then. And by then, we will also know who our next council member is going to be, or hopefully.
Yep. So was there a date on that? Sorry, Councilmember Moran.
So that would be, what, on the 17th?
Correct.
Mr. City Manager, does that work?
We're, thank you, Mayor. We're happy to accommodate that on the 17th. We can squeeze that in, we'll make a spot for it. And hopefully, we can, if the will of the council is to interview both the applicants, if they're able to make it, we can make that happen using the same process that you did for this one. And we can just add that at the beginning of the meeting and hopefully, we can get through the rest of the meeting once we get through that process.
Okay, very good. Okay, counsel? I'm scrolling on my tablet here. Okay. So we do have public comment next. And, sorry, my iPad is hanging on by a thread here.
Okay, just online, Mayor Malcha, there's no one in the room, if we have anyone.
Okay. I still need to read the item, but is, there are, I can see attendees. So let me go ahead and read this for public comment in case any of them would like to give public comment. The public verbal comment, you may provide up to three minutes of verbal public comment during the meeting by attending in person at City Hall or virtually through Zoom. To provide verbal comments virtually through Zoom, please join the Zoom meeting using the following information under the meeting accessibility at the top of this agenda. During the public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if you wish to give comment. If joining the meeting by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and you will be given the ability to turn on your webcam if desired. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. So do any of our attendees wish to give public comment this evening? Don't see them raising their hand, but I'll give the clerk's office just a moment to confirm. Krista, can you just confirm that no one is wishing to give public comment?
Madam Mayor, were you talking about in-person attendees?
I understand there is no one there in person, but of the online folks.
Okay, yes. If you are attending online and wish to comment, please raise your hand. And I do not, oh, we have one hand raised.
Ms. Victor?
Yes. So I will promote Ms. Victor.
Hi, I'm Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish 20 years. I guess since this was about Planning Commission seats, I give a little bit of history tonight. I had originally started going to meetings, mostly council. And I didn't go to the special meetings because I wasn't sure what those were. I just went to the regular meetings. I learned, oh, the special meeting is just the same thing. It's just another day. And then the study sessions didn't use to have an attorney at them. But the Planning Commission meetings, actually Lyman Howard had personally called me into his office to speak with me for 10 minutes once and he said he had a personal request for me that he wanted me to start speaking at Planning Commission because he thought that public input being well-read, researched and given earlier would have the most effect. So based on that, I started going to Planning Commission meetings as well, which makes it twice as hard because you have twice as many meetings or, they usually have two per month. But the packets are very, very well structured. Usually, there's one topic. There's three minutes non-agenda at the beginning and then seven minutes agenda, either at the end or the middle, and there's public hearings. But what I learned in doing that is, because I went through, I guess, several chairs of Planning Commissions, it really is an important body. They ask really great questions. A lot of stuff gets hashed out that doesn't even have to come to council because it can be talked about. And listening to public comment is important. I've seen public comment where maybe you don't like anything the person says, but there's one word that they'll say. And that word ends up bringing up discussion and makes a change. I've seen things said that 180 degrees gets adopted and actually ends up being the right thing or the thing that does get adopted and lives and ends up being very strong. So it's really important for people to speak, which is why I turned on my hand tonight, to be able to talk, to know that they have that opportunity. It's very comforting to know that the Planning Commission starts at 6:30 and it usually finishes by eight or 8:30. And once in a while, on a very important topic, when there's a lot of things, they'll go to nine. So it's very reliable. It's always on Thursdays, it's twice a month. And it is really great. They don't usually split their votes. Usually, they're pretty uniform about what they do and they get to do a recommendation. And they just looked at their bylaws, actually. And I think they're going to allow a second, like dissenting opinion or a different, a minority opinion is what they're calling it. So that was really good to see. But it's just a super important thing. And so I'm glad that you did pick a member tonight. I think it is important to get another member there. They don't get to pick what they work on. They work on what's been directed by council. And I believe in the process. I believe in supporting it. And I hope that people who weren't selected will come and speak at the mic about topics because they can do that even if they don't get the seat. So that's what I would say, based on my seven years of being an advocate for many things, but primarily stormwater. But we need everyone who can to participate. We need to fill all the seats we can with qualified people and who are interested. Thanks.
Thank you, Switzer. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised for public comment. So we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I believe unless there is anything for the good of the order, that we can adjourn our meeting. Anything for the good of the order, counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. As soon as there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel and staff.